We call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is July the 18th, 2016 at 6:00 PM. Tonight Commissioner Ronnie Reese will lead us into invocation and Commissioner Larry Yoder will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance. If you all would please rise.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come to you today and we thank you for this day, a good day you've given to us. Thank you for the opportunity we have to come and be busy about the business of Alexander County. Pray for all our county employees for their protection and safety. Thank you for everything they do each day. But we pray for the safety of our emergency services and EMT, EMS, first responders, our police and fire and highway patrol as they're putting on their lives on the line every day for us and for we see what's going on in other places. Thankfully we haven't had that problem here, but we need to be ready and be prepared. Thank you for everything that they do for our safety. Just be with us through this meeting, leading, guiding, directing all that said and done where we make wise decisions that would move Alexander County forward. Thank you for the people that are here tonight, give us a safe journey back to our homes when we're finished and we'll give you all the credit for it in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's doing this recognizing? Are you? Larry is? Okay Larry. For Mary Wyke and Energy United Water Corporation. Commissioner Yoder if you'd like to start.
Mary Harrington. Where's Mary?
White.
Mary White. Huh? Where's she at? If you'll come up. Mary? If you'd come down front so everybody can see you please. I'm gonna read this then I'm gonna step up there with you, okay? And if you'll step over there at the podium and I'll be up there in a minute. I won't leave everybody's house for long, okay? All right? I'm gonna read this so everybody can hear this. Mary was hired at Snyder Mills Incorporated on February the 18th, 1953 and worked until November the 16th, 1955 when she and her husband moved to Michigan. Mary returned and was rehired on September the 10th, 1956 and has been with Snyder Mills since. In 1959, she earned a tremendous salary per hour. Her salary at that time was a dollar and 10 cent per hour based on the payroll records at Snyder. She has experienced in various departments including the weave room, cloth room, and lab. She has been lab department manager since 1969 and people in the textile industry seek her out and ask for her recommendations when they have questions or problems. Mary will celebrate her 60th anniversary with Snyder Mills on September the 10th, 2016. Though she had a brief break in her employment, her total years of service are 62.75 years. Mary has been a very valuable, valuable asset to Snyder Mills and we can, and Snyder Mills and this community and we the commissioners are not saying enough about her dedication, her hard work, her knowledge and her loyalty that she has given the folks at Snyder Mills. Now on July the 15th, I understand she has a birthday and I'm not gonna tell anyone how old you are because a gentleman never asks or tells a lady's age and I will not do that tonight. If you'd like, you may.
I will tell you after I'm 88.
You're welcome. But this is the Alexander County Board of Commissioners. It's known as this key to the county upon Mary Wyke in recognition of her 62 years of dedicated service to Snyder Mills Incorporated presented this July 18th, 2016. And we want to say that I know that Snyder Mills appreciates your service. We appreciate your dedication to Snyder Mills and to this community and your commitment to be a lifelong employee of Snyder Mills. That's a tremendous commitment that a person makes. And thank you very, very much. And I know your Snyder family's here. I see a bunch of them back there. They all came in, even one of them came in a hot Camaro. And I know you have your family with you and I'm gonna present this to you and if the family would like to come up, the employees of Snyder Mills, and if any of you would like to say anything, please come forward and do so and we'll have a picture with Mary taken here in front of the county seal. And next up this we're gonna do, we're gonna let you talk.
Don't let him talk.
Oh, okay. All right. So here you go. How many of your family's back there? Hey, come up, come up, we'll get your picture later. Chip, any of you guys, y'all would come up, we'll get a family picture, we'll get a picture of the Snyder Mills one, please. Pastor Stig, where are you? Where's Pastor Stig? You come on up too, sir.
Thank you, friends.
I'll tell you what, let's get the family photo and get the pastor in. Get the pastor, get the family in. I was looking, I was looking there and not. How you gonna do this, Mr. Farmer?
Take it outside. Last picture.
Come over here, Gladys, in front of the Lord.
New York City, 63 years. I've never heard of that. Six years, 63 years.
I sure hope they don't say that about me. Hope I can add five more to the other house. I'll be 38.
That's okay.
I'll be 38 years, but 23.
He told us come around here, but I can go by cars.
My health insurance was, if that were, maybe not quite my death. Kind of set the bar for me. It's kind of my goal. Cause my family doesn't live healthy from 67. We didn't get it from 70. It's not good. So you got 10 years there. Enjoy life.
Yep, Mary. Thank y'all. I tell ya, that's cool, man.
I go back to the door cause that's where I stand.
Hey, Greg. Hey. Did you play something? Look at the style.
They just dropped the muck.
No, it ain't. I wanted to, I got a picture of Terry Speed.
Oh, that was good.
I've been working 70.
Oh, you saw my car.
What is, this is not asking for it.
They start you out right. We start out feeling experiences. Going out there experiencing, you know, degree and you hold and stay in. I'm just wondering, I told him.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Did you get that to her? Thank you. Appreciate y'all. Appreciate what y'all do for this community. Wait. I told you that you did it.
All right, we'll go on.
I don't know anything about you.
Next, we'll call on Commissioner Milton Campbell and he's gonna present an award to Energy United Water Corporation.
Well, that's a tough act to follow, but we'll try. Energy United Water Corporation's worked for the Alexander County Government on numerous water projects over the years that have served the citizens of Alexander County. We are fortunate to have a great working relationship with them. In March of this year, the Alexander County Board of Commissioners and Energy United agreed to amend our 2008 contract for the Northeast Area Water Project that basically resulted in Energy United giving the county their former offices and property in Stony Point in exchange for a small pot of money outlined in the contract that set aside half of the minimum water charge for active lines installed with the Northeast Area Water Project. The county has taken ownership of this property and are assessing what would be the best way to utilize this for an outreach in the Stony Point community. And we just wanted to thank Energy United. I believe Mr. Rod Watts is here on behalf of Energy United and would like to give him this plaque and one of these plaques will be mounted in the building as well.
Chip Swinney was telling me this.
You wanna say a few words Rod?
I'm dying to. We just appreciate the relationship that we've got with Alexander County and being able to do some positive things in the community in Stony Point area whenever we realized that we were gonna be leaving Stony Point, we wanted to make sure that Stony Point was taken care of. And I think we've done that with the arrangements that the two of us have made and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Well, let me say one thing before you go. I deal with a lot of water departments and I will have to say Energy United is by far the best one that I deal with and they just go beyond the call of duty, you know, when it comes to service. So you guys do a great job and we really appreciate it.
I appreciate that.
Ronnie, it's been a privilege working with you. I know whenever we first got started, I remember you saying Larry, whatever we do, let's work together to make sure that we get Energy United and get water in Northern Alexander County.
And we did that.
With Norris Keever, Darrell Robertson, I think William Hammer and I can't remember those, I think it may have been Wes Bowlin, we worked really hard to make that happen. And that was in a relationship that was developed between Energy United and the county to make that happen. And I will personally say thank you all for the job that y'all did then and helping support Alexander County to move water lines forward.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the work that you put into that Larry.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ron, could I just add one thing? The water project in Vastai was not an easy project to do for the county Energy United, but without the partnership, it would never been the success that it is today and we're very appreciative of that relationship. It's made great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay gentlemen, you've got the agenda before you. Are there any deletions or additions or changes? None? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. First item on the agenda is public comment and I just want to remind everyone that public comment, we have five three-minute sections to speak. We have five people that have signed up to speak. You're limited to three minutes and any comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Okay, first on the agenda is Glenn Mays. Glenn, if you would, come up and just, I think you signed up to speak about the Independence Celebration.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Chairman Mayberry, Commissioners, Mr. French, Ms. Darnes, ladies and gentlemen. I thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My main reason is to say thank you for your continued support for the Independence Celebration. Our recent event brought thousands of people together to celebrate our nation's independence. This was our third celebration here in Alexander County, but it marked the 240th year of this little experiment in democracy in our wonderful country. This annual event is growing, even though this is our third year as I mentioned, and we hope that its future success will continue. There are many people throughout the community to thank for making it a success and more than 50 businesses and individuals made financial and in-kind contributions for the event this year. We thank them for their enthusiastic support. Of course, after all expenses are paid, the profits from the event will benefit Alexander County Habitat for Humanity. Last year's event resulted, it's not this year, but we don't know yet how much that will be, but last year's event resulted in about $3,700 profit. Thanks to Matt Cooksey, the Executive Director of Habitat, for his efforts in making this event a success. Also, our thanks go to every, to our event chairperson this year named Donna Perkins. She and the planning committee worked very hard to make the event happen. Thanks to all of them. In addition to Donna, there was Matt Cooksey, Leann Perkins, Russell Green, Matt Schrum, David Odom, and Rick French. We also thank our vendors who participated this year. Each of them has expressed a desire to return next year. Thanks also to Ben Hines for the state flags display that was along Isle Down Road and of course, we appreciate Rocky Lynn, who was our entertainment, he and his band for the entertainment they provided this year. Thanks also to the Taylorsville Police Department and the town of Taylorsville, Alexander County Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, our Fire Marshal, our Fire and Rescue and EMS personnel. And thank you too to Robin Earp. I don't know whether she's here tonight or not, but she managed the field games for our youngsters. Thanks to the folks of Alexander Central High School and the County Board of Education for providing a site for this, for the event. And to the media for publicizing it. And of course Eddie Jolly, who was our pyrotechnician who gave us another wonderful fireworks show. Our thanks too for everyone who attended the celebration. I hope I've not overlooked anybody that I need to thank, although I'm sure I may have. A lot of people worked very hard to make this event, make this event something of which we can all be proud and provide an opportunity for everyone to celebrate our independence and the liberty and freedoms that we enjoy as Americans. A lot of people have fought and bled and died to preserve our democracy during these past 20, 240 years and that's what the celebration's all about. We should always remember and appreciate that. I'll leave you with a comment made by Sir Winston Churchill many years ago about democracy. He said, "Democracy is the worst form of government in the world, except for all the rest." Thank you.
Next on the list is Mel Hager. Is this Hager? Here she is. I think she's gonna be speaking about the summer reading program.
Good evening, everyone. And just wanted to give a little update on the summer reading program that's been going on at Alexander County Library in Bethlehem Branch. We have over 600 youth birth to 18 in Alexander County that have signed up for the program. We've been going now for a full four weeks. We are now in our fifth week and so far we have over 4,000 hours reported of reading, which is very exciting. It has always been a huge community gathering of volunteers, assistance from of course, the county, from our Friends of the Library, the Alexander Friends of the Library and Bethlehem Friends of the Library have been very good to sponsor programs that we're gonna be doing all through the summer. And the State Library, we thank them very much for their assistance. Wanted to just give some of the final things that we're gonna be doing. We did have a costume contest, which was the Outlandish Exercise Costume Contest and our winners will be published in the Taylorsville Times. We were very excited at the kids that came in on July 1st and they were dressed up in crazy costumes and have, they gave themselves crazy names. And then we let folks come in every day and vote for their favorite ones in each of the age categories. And so when you see the little winners, they were absolutely adorable. Some things that will be happening here in the next couple of weeks, we've been very grateful to have Abby, our reading therapy dog. They say that children that have dogs that they read to or any animals are not under pressure and so she's been a real asset to our programming and she's there every Wednesday from 2:00 to 3:00. So if anyone has a child that has a reluctance to read, that's very comforting for them and that's free to do from 2:00 to 3:00 on Wednesdays. Preschool Storytimes on Tuesdays at 10:00 AM. We have a program with Maria Parson that we've been doing so far this year, or this summer. We've had two sessions that were a lot of fun and it's Big Me, Little Me and that's at Reformation Lutheran in the Fellowship Hall and we're inviting those. It's based on small children with older parents or children that can get together and work out together. And then this Friday, we have a big game in and that's something I invite everyone, adult, children. We're gonna have games laid out all over the library for folks. So we'd love to see anyone and everyone come by and there'll be all different types of games. And then just the national team lock-in will be the final teen program that we're doing. We're involved in the sixth one this year and there's over 90 libraries across the United States, including Alaska, that are involved. And so the children or teens that would like to be involved, rising 8th grade and up, need to contact me at the library to reserve a spot.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
And listen, I know that Ms. Hager, you don't realize this, but our public comment period is for the citizens to come to us to discuss things. If we need to have county employees to give us updates on things, they need to be put on the agenda. So not that county employees can't come and speak about issues, but if it's about your day-to-day jobs, then you need to ask to be put on the agenda and not the public comment period. So that being said, since we limit this to five spots, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add another spot if that's okay with everybody else. Cause Mike Henry's actually written about that and complained about it and I think he's spot-on about that. We don't need to have our public employees commenting on their government jobs during public comment. Is that okay with everyone? I'm gonna add somebody else to the agenda and if anybody wants to speak, I know a lot of people hear about the potential ABC referendum. We have, we don't have anybody signed up to speak for that. If anybody would like to speak for that, you know, raise your hand. If you don't, we'll allow somebody against to speak. So we've already got one of those. Okay, nobody? Well, nobody has to speak now. All right, next on the agenda is Kathy Riddle. She's gonna be speaking about the Read to Me Program.
Tonight I want to talk about a wonderful, quiet, community happening known as the Read to Me Program. Many of you may not know about this positive early literacy program that consists of several volunteers. And so I want to tell you about it and I have two points I want to make. I want to recognize the readers and I also want to recruit some more readers. I know that we have readers out here in the audience tonight who participate with this program. Would you wave your hand, recognize, okay, so that other people can see you? And the Tasha is involved too. It's a joint program between the Friends of the Library and the Partnership for Children and the library. And what we do is, this was started four years ago and these volunteers read at childcare centers in the county. We started with four, or excuse me, seven centers and we are up to 18 now. And these are basically that we read to three-year-olds. We are currently in Stony Point, Hidden Knight, Taylorsville, Ellendale, and Wittenberg and the Bethlehem Branch, the Bethlehem Branch Friends provide three readers and three readers to three different sites there. This year, Mickey Earp and Hazel Yoder are now helping me coordinate this program and we could probably add more centers if we had more readers and more money. But these are the reasons why we are committed to this program and these are the facts about Alexander County. This county is where 14% of the adults lack basic prose literacy skills. And that's according to the National Center for Education Statistics. The poverty level for children under age five is at least 20 and a half percent. And while our poverty rate is above the state average at 16.8% compared to 16.1% and over 27% of our children live in food insecure households. Our median household income is about 5,000 below the state average and the number of residents with a bachelor's degree or higher in 2012 was 11.3% compared to 26.5 in the state average. So the Read to Me goal is to show kids that it's possible to learn to love to read and to show them that other adults besides their parents or their teachers love to read. So that is why we work on this program and I would hope that having you heard this, that you would like to help recruit and contact me if you'd like to do that.
Okay, thank you Ms. Killian. I'm sorry, Riddle. I know Kathy, but I was looking at the wrong name here. Next on up is Connie Killian. Is Connie here? Okay. She's gonna be speaking about Bethlehem Day.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here tonight and I appreciate you guys letting me talk to you. I want to tell you an update on the Bethlehem- I want to tell you an update on the Bethlehem Community Development, from the Bethlehem Community Development Association, and I want to talk to you about Bethlehem Day. This is our sixth, we can't believe we've had it for six years now. It will be held on September 17th and at the library, at the round, kind of round center around Bethlehem Library in front of Josh, Mr. Lael's place and other areas in there. And this year, we have, we're going to have two picking tents. And we hope if you've got a musical instrument, you'll come out and pick with them. Most of it's going to be country music or bluegrass. So I'm sure, you know, that's the kind of music we all like to hear. And our food and vendor spots are still available. We have quite a few yet. And this being election year, we sure could use some politicians out, too. So, and we also are going to have a spot for the kids. We have a big feel that we have a lot of things that they can play and do, and that will, and we'll have a couple of church people from two different churches in the community. The kids, the junior high and high school kids will be watching the kids for you while you're walking around and enjoying our festival. And we also are going to have a cruise in at Shiloh Lutheran. So our vendors will be set up going down toward Shiloh Lutheran. We also, this year, we have something brand new. We have what we call a Bethlehem Baking Challenge. And what we, I'd like for you to do is enter and bring your best baked goods. And we will be selling them by bite so that you can taste them and see, you know, make a vote on them and see, you know, which one that you like the best. And then we will have a winner, and we've got a special prize for that. And entries also can be from other places other than just Bethlehem. And the churches will be involved with that, we hope. So we hope to see you all there on September 17th, and it's from 10:00 to 4:00. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Reverend Jeff Chapman, and he is going to be speaking on the ABC referendum. Mr. Chapman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. Commissioners, Mr. French, Ms. Starnes, thank you for your time tonight. Here we go again. Here we go again. And here we are again. I would like to begin tonight on a positive note to you, Ryan. I call you Ryan because we were schoolmates, class of 1990 at ACHS. I would like to thank Commissioner Mayberry for the heads-up about this meeting on a phone call that he called me Thursday afternoon concerning the referendum, your intentions tonight. And again, I thank you for that. We feel that tonight, these proceedings are again a representative issue, representative of just a certain group and not really the county as a whole. The referendum, of course, being defeated by 52.5% the last election, and that was in, again, in March of 2013. It's proven through the last few months of some political poor mouthing from state senators and representatives, as well as county officials, that really we're probably not as poor as we say we are. If the economy, and I say this, and this is a point I want to emphasize, that if the economy of our beloved county was really the issue, then why would citizens be driving anywhere but the county seat of Taylorsville to get all their booze? Plenty of booze there. In fact, one of my associates told me today that from Taylorville Savings Bank Branch in Bethlehem to the ABC stores, 5.59 miles. So if we're so concerned about it, if it's our economy, why would we be going across the bridge or going across the river, as we like to say, to get our booze when there's plenty of booze here? I believe that as the political theater has regressed to catering to select few and instead of the majority, this tactic has trickled down from the federal and state levels to our local government. It will ultimately come down to this, to the vote of good, God-fearing church members to decide whether our county goes to a wet status or remain a dry county. But remember, and this is the selling point, that for every dollar raised in tax revenue, you will offset that $1 with $21.43 in public services, including welfare, law enforcement, and healthcare. And I say to you, what a great investment that would be for our county. What a tremendous investment that would be. How can we exclude ultimately destroyed families, lives, ultimately souls ruined by the negative effects of alcohol? In fact, there are members on this board tonight that you have witnessed firsthand how destructive this drug really is. And then again, here we go again. So you decide what's best for our county tonight. It's in your hands. Do we want beer joints, smorgasbord, facilitation of alcohol? Or would we rather have a great place to raise our family and our kids? I want to say this to you, you men. The fallout of your decision will be costly to your political career, to circumvent the will of the constituents, or result in a political nightmare that you may never wake up from. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, could I make a brief call? Yes, sir. Go right ahead. We have one more spot left. Can I, can I get your name and what you'll be speaking on?
Richard Dickey, Bethlehem Community. I'll be speaking about the referendum.
Okay. Go ahead.
There are many of us who came this evening to support and listen to the comments about the proposed referendum. And we have thought long and hard about it. We realize that there are two sides to the issue, that this is important for the county. But I think that our position is that it's not just about taxes, it's not just about freedom, but it's about the right to make a decision for ourselves, to be free to do what we want to do, rather than be controlled by the opinions of people who believe that it is a church issue. We do not feel it's a church issue. We feel that it's a freedom issue. And so I'd like those who came in support of proposing to support the referendum to raise their hands, please. Just so you know that we're here. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Item number two on the agenda is the CVCC Alexander Furniture Academy update. Linda Graham, Executive Director of CVCC, Alexander Center for Education. Dr. Garrett Henshaw, CVCC President. Do I need to go on, or anybody else going to be speaking?
Roy Bearden with Craftmaster.
Roy Bearden of Craftmaster. I believe you're Vice President, is that correct?
Yes.
Senior Vice President.
Senior Vice President.
We bring you good news.
Good.
Good evening, Chairman Mayberry, Commissioners, Mr. French, Madam Clerk, and audience. It is our pleasure tonight to announce to you this evening that our first CVCC Alexander Furniture Academy started last Monday evening, July 11th, at 5:30 at night. We have 26 eager participants who are actually down the hall right now, training to serve as sewer operators or upholstery craftsmen. And the good news is, the average age of these students is 30 years old. So as you can see, we're excited to be placing a younger generation into a field that we desperately need more trained workers. And at the end of this 24-week training period, students will have graduated with a Career Readiness Certification and a CVCC Alexander Furniture Academy Certificate. Now, as you all know, this became a reality as the hard work that you saw three years ago for trained workers in Alexander County. And because of your hard work, you Commissioners, and I know Mr. Lael and Mr. Reese and Mr. Campbell, you may not have been on board when Mr. Mayberry and Mr. Yoder fought hard for this initiative, but I know you've been an integral part of it now. And I know you've seen the results of those efforts across the street particularly. But we couldn't have done this without your vision, first and foremost. And I want to thank our county government, Alexander Economic Development Corporation, Alexander County Schools, under the leadership of Dr. Jennifer Hapner, and under the leadership of Dr. Garrett Henshaw with Catawba Valley Community College. And you see, it was a true partnership, wasn't it?
It was.
I mean, an extensive partnership where the fruits of our labor are being seen. But most importantly, the cry came from our business leaders, didn't it? And so at this time, let me introduce Dr. Garrett Henshaw, who will also introduce Roy Bearden, who can talk to you about the business perspective. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, Mr. French, Ms. Starnes. It's a great day to be in Alexander County. This is a different day here because we are making an investment in people for the future. This is the tip of the iceberg for what's going to happen in workforce education right here in this county. No more driving across the river to get education and training. We're going to deliver it right here. It's been your commitment, it's been our business partner's commitment, and the commitment of our faculty and staff, to put a program together that's going to set the stage for a lot of different programs to come. I want to thank the Commissioners for your vision. Thank Darrell Robertson for working on this project, Mr. French for providing leadership and getting this thing done. We've got to get this building open here before long. And then you're going to see great things happening for the people here. There's going to be opportunities that they've never had access to. Catawba Valley Community College is proud to be a part of that partnership. Because as you can see, when we work together as a community, we can do anything. I'd also like to thank our founding sponsors, Craftmaster Furniture, specifically Roy Calcane, Roy Bearden, and Vice President Kevin Mann, Kincaid Furniture, Mr. Stephen Little, Production Manager, and Mitchell Gold and Bob Williams, Dan Guthro, the Vice President for Human Resources. These individuals put two years of tireless effort in. It wasn't just about money, it's about getting it done. And they helped us to put together a program that this community can be proud of, that will secure a future for the furniture industry for years to come. But not only just the founding partners, we've also had the furniture industry in general in this region bring forth cash to help our students access this program. It is not free. It costs the citizens money to be able to do this training. Thanks to the generosity of our sponsorship sponsors, we've raised over $13,000 to assure that this first class could come through without debt over their head. I'd like to thank American Home Furnishings, Craftmaster Furniture, Hancock &amp; Moore, Huntington House, Kincaid Lazy Boy, Mitchell Gold and Bob Williams, Paladin Industries, and Taylor King Furniture for joining this effort and helping us to bring it to a reality. Thank you again, and I'd like to introduce Roy Bearden, Senior Vice President for Manufacturing, Craftmaster Furniture.
Okay. First of all, Commissioners, I want to say thank you, okay? And the audience, I wasn't quite expecting such an audience to be speaking in front of. You may not have an interest in the furniture industry, you may have another reason to be here, but I have one reason to be here. And that's to say thank you, guys, for having the vision to purchase the facility across the street. Our dream is now reality. As Linda said, the students are down the hall, there's 26 of them, they're in the classroom. They have three weeks of classroom. So two weeks from tonight, they'll go across the street and go into the academy hands-on worksite situation. Training will begin at that point. I, as a representative of the seven companies that were mentioned, first of all, was asked to come up and give an update of where we stand. We are about 80% complete. I'm talking about, all the equipment is purchased, it's installed, work tables, work stations, upholstery work rails, inspection decks, the storage racks, safety ladders, all the way down to the brooms and the dust pans are in that facility. Hand tools, all the supplies, our cut-so kits, it's in the facility now, it's ready for the students. We have a handful of things that we'll be bringing in over the next couple of weeks to make it complete, to get started. But first of all, it started with a vision, and that is now reality. And I want to say again, thank you, guys, for that. I was asked by Linda to represent our industry from a standpoint of ordering supplies, materials, equipment, and have worked with her. She has done an outstanding job as the Director of this school, and I want to say that in front of you, guys. Also, Darrell Robertson, have worked closely with Darrell and the subcontractors, doing the engineering work for the school. And we're at the point now where we're ready to get down to business. So again, thank you, we appreciate it. It's critical to the economy of this county to be training, training, training. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bearden. Linda, you want to say anything else?
I think that's it.
Mr. Chairman, if I can say one thing. I would love, as a board to, I would assume in the very near future, walk through and tour the new facility. I mean, I've had the opportunity to be in a couple furniture factory environments before, but I just, I'd like, you know, and I may not be speaking for anybody but myself, but I would like to see.
We'll set up a...
Yeah, I haven't been in there in a while, so I'd like to see it myself. Anybody else?
You know, I go back to when we started this program, and I think we must have had 3,000 meetings. Some were good, some were great, some were ugly. And through it all, we continue to work hard to bring all this together for it to be reality. And I really want to say thank you to everyone that's been involved. And I can't name everybody because I always leave somebody out, and I'm not going to do that. Everybody knows who they are. But the commitment that everybody made to stay on board through the thick and the thin to make this a reality is quite an accomplishment and shows what people can do when they work together. And that's to be, you know, I just want everybody that's been involved in that, I want them to know how hard that's been and what everybody's gone through. We've been happy, we've been mad, we fussed, we celebrated. I mean, it was just like a family because I sat in those meetings and I just will tell all of you, I'm glad, and the only thing that I request is the, one thing, I really want an invitation to the first graduation because that's going to be great for our citizens. Because nobody understands how hard it is to get good sewers, to get good upholsters. And upholstery's an art, you know, and you really have to work at it, and I can't wait to see. I got, is that December 21st? Okay. Thank you. But I just want to say thank you to everybody because I know that Darrell Robertson's worked hard, and I know that you folks have, and it's quite an accomplishment. And just want to say thank you very, very much. And our citizens, it's going to be great that CBCC is on this side of the river so our folks can get an education and they don't have to drive so far. And thank you all for the commitment that you made. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I just want to say one more word. I'll try to keep it short, but it's taken years to do this, and people don't realize how, and like you said, 3,000 meetings, it probably was. It's taken, I think we started working on this back, you know, early 2009, and it's taken that long to get everything done. We went back to the drawing board a couple times, and yeah, had, you know, people gotten along, and then people get mad at each other, and it's been a learning experience. But we got through it all. And it's going to be a good thing for Alexander County. We managed to secure $2 million in grants, over $2 million in grants. It's, it's just been a place where all the different parts of the community, education, the business, government can all come together and work towards one goal. And we're going to realize that goal as soon as our first class graduates. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say one thing. I appreciate all the work, and Dr. Henshaw, Linda, and Craftmaster, all the other places that's been involved in this. There's a little magazine that we get as Commissioners that says Economic Indicators. Alexander County is listed in here. It says, "Increased employment, nearly 100 jobs were added to Alexander County's furniture industry between the fourth quarter of 2014 and 2015. Other manufacturing sectors that gained jobs were wood products, there was 44, 34, and food services rose from 486 in the fourth quarter of 2014 to 526 in the fourth quarter of 2015." So I had a brother that worked 20-some years in furniture. I never... So I had a brother that worked 20-some years in furniture, I never really acquired that talent, I went with him a time or two, and cars are really what I was really more designed to work on, but I'm glad that we've got that, and it looks like, you know, those jobs are coming back, and we'll be sitting in a good place in Alexander County. Thank y'all, and thank all the Commissioners for the work on this.
Anybody else? Good. Okay, thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to number three on the agenda, which is a discussion of the Broadband Committee, and I have no prepared remarks or anything else, I'm just going to, you know, go off what I, but anyway, Milton Campbell and myself, this was about three or four weeks ago, wasn't it? We had a conference call with a utilities engineer and the founder of a company called FiberNet, which operated in West Virginia, and they grew from, well, I don't know what they started out at, but they grew to $180 million in revenues, I believe, every year. And what they did was offer fiber optic cable to different areas up there, businesses, homes. I believe they said they got a 65% coverage rate in the county in which they operated in, but what our plans are is to, we're going to be looking into what's it going to take to run fiber optic cable in Alexander County? And that's not going to be a county project, we're going to work with some representatives from the Department of Commerce, private companies, some engineers, to study this issue and see what it will take to get private investment to come in and start putting the utilities into Alexander County that will bring fiber optic cable to the schools, to our businesses, and to our homes here. We're a long ways off from presenting any kind of numbers or any kind of plans or anything like that, but the reason I wanted to mention that is just so that we have to form a broadband committee, and if you have certain skills that may come into play with dealing with fiber optic cable, we would like for you to be on that committee. And if you could, would you contact the county clerk, Jamie Starnes, and just ask to be a part of that committee? And we're going to have our own representatives, such as myself, or Milton Campbell on there, and I'm sure the county manager, and some other specific people that need to be on that committee, but we're looking for people that may have a background in that particular utility that can help guide us along the way.
Well, and the whole purpose is, we've got areas that you cannot get internet service or the internet speed is so slow, it would surprise the number of people that work at home that need computer capability and internet speed, and that really infringes on their ability to work in that environment. So, as well as we've got kids that go home from school that need internet access, and, you know, you go up into the areas, I'd say Russell Gap would be one, I think is an underserviced area, so it's just trying to figure out a way to more broaden the coverage and actually get a higher speed internet service, and also bring some competitive environment into the services offered because right now the choices are somewhat limited, which you have limited choices, that's a controlled pricing, and, you know, that's not good, so...
We're going to try to increase competition so that we may get better service out of the companies that already operate here as well. And I would mention too that, you know, we've got a long ways to go, but there's other counties that have already started this process, we've got businesses out there, and if you look at the size of files today, engineering files that certain businesses have to use, and, you know, they may have to send plans to, you know, wherever, Brazil, so you've got these large files that they have to transmit, and they're operating on, you know, telephone cables, so we've got to look at what can we do to help the businesses out in Alexander County so they can stay here and grow here.
And one other, we have met with, basically quote-unquote, experts in this field, and one of the things that I took away from it is that, you know, well, the world's going wireless, but wireless requires fiber optic to operate. And, you know, because initially I kind of thought, well, everything's going wireless, why are we worried about hard cable? And they very quickly, you know, showed how much I knew about fiber optic cable, which is nothing, and essentially said, hey, how do you think the wireless works? So it's definitely a positive, a positive applicant, you know, positive thing that could bring, that could, could really help, as well as, you know, kind of like, I don't remember if Ryan or Milton said this, but if nothing else would create some competition, where there's competition, there's pressure to, there's pressure applied to the current providers to provide better service, to provide faster service, in hopes that they can maintain, you know, maintain people's business, so we really don't see any negative, you know, to this process.
And what the process is going to be, we're going to form a committee, and that committee is going to decide on a, we're going to do a study, and we're going to put that out for proposals, so we're going to have a study done, and what we're going to attempt, we're not going to get this, so, but what we're going to shoot for, we're going to shoot high, and we're going to aim for 100% coverage to every business and every home in Alexander County. We will not, you know, be able to do that, but if you aim high and we get 75%, you know, we've done tremendous. I believe the company that we talked to, I'm pretty sure they said they had 65% coverage in West Virginia, so in rural West Virginia, so they've done pretty good. But that's all, I wanted to mention that, just if you have a background in that, please contact the clerk and ask to be put on that committee, and someone, one of us will contact you, so thank you. Item number four on the agenda is Discussion of Proposed ABC Referendum. And where did that go? Okay, and I'm going to read this. Resolution calling for a countywide alcoholic beverage referendum to be held in conjunction with the November 8th, 2016 general election. Whereas North Carolina General Statute 18B-600B provides in pertinent part that any county may hold a malt beverage, unfortified wine, ABC store, and mixed beverage election, and whereas North Carolina General Statute 18B-601B provides in pertinent part that a county alcoholic beverage election shall be conducted by the County Board of Elections when the county is eligible to hold such an election under North Carolina General Statute 18B-600, and the County Board of Elections receives a written request for an election from the governing body of the county, and whereas North Carolina General Statute 18B-601D provides in pertinent part that more than one kind of alcoholic beverage election may be included in a single written request for an election from the governing body of the county. And whereas Alexander County held a special referendum on malt beverages, unfortified wine, ABC stores, and mixed beverages on March 19th, 2013, and the results of this referendum were certified on March 26th, 2013. The time limit of three years pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 18B-604A has elapsed as required by law, and whereas Alexander is eligible to hold a malt beverage, unfortified wine, ABC store, and mixed beverage election pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 18B-600A and North Carolina General Statute 18B-604A. And whereas the governing body of Alexander County, which is eligible pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 18B-600B to hold a malt beverage, unfortified wine, ABC store, and mixed beverage election, has determined that it desires to allow the voters of Alexander County to consider the propositions enumerated in North Carolina General Statute 18B-602A1, North Carolina General Statute 18B-602D1, North Carolina General Statute 18B-602G, and North Carolina General Statute 18B-602H, as they relate to the sale of malt beverages, unfortified wine, ABC stores, and mixed beverages. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners does hereby request that the Board of Elections of Alexander County hold alcoholic beverage elections for malt beverages, unfortified wine, ABC stores, and mixed beverages in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 18B, Article 6 of the North Carolina General Statutes, and requests that the following propositions be placed on the ballot. A, as to the requested malt beverage election to prevent the, to permit the on-premises and off-premises sale of malt beverages, for or against. As to the requested unfortified wine election, to permit the on-premises and off-premises sale of unfortified wine, for and against. As to the requested ABC store election, to permit the operation of ABC stores, for and against. As to the requested mixed beverage election, to permit the sale of mixed beverages in hotels, restaurants, private clubs, community theaters, and convention centers, for or against. B, it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners requests that the County Board of Elections conduct and set the date for the alcoholic beverage elections requested herein in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 163-287, and that the alcoholic beverage elections requested herein be held on the date of the 2016 general election in North Carolina, which is November 8th, 2016, adopted this 18th day of July, 2016. That's a lot to read. Do we have a motion?
I would like to make that motion to have the ABC referendum November 8th, but I'd like to say why I feel like we need to have the referendum.
Can you wait till we do the discussion?
Yep, sure, we'll do the discussion.
So you are making a motion?
That we, that the proposed ABC referendum on the general election ballot, November 8th, 2016.
That we pass the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Here's where the discussion, okay. We've heard a lot about the last one in 2013, I wasn't sitting up here in 2013, so I can't, I'm not going to try to armchair quarterback, but if I, if the statistics I researched are correct, we had a 43% voter participation in that special referendum. Number one, I feel much more comfortable, our average presidential election voter participation is 72%. If you look at the last two presidential elections, 72%, we have the presidential, we have the governor election. I would love it if 100% of our registered voters would vote because voter apathy is a problem in our country, but at a 43%, I just, I feel like by having it at the presidential election, number one, I don't know if I'd have been in favor of having it in a, in a non-general election if that were permissible. I think there's an efficiency holding it with the general election, you don't have to have a special referendum, which is an additional cost, I think it's roughly $26,000 plus or minus. When I look at this, we have good citizens on both sides of this issue, we have people that are passionate for, we have people that are passionate against. You know, at the end of the day, I trust the voters of Alexander County to come out and participate in large numbers, and during this time, we'll be inundated with statistics from both sides, the fors and againsts. I mean, there's going to be tremendous amount of volume of statistics. We probably differ on this board on how we feel about this issue, and, you know, if I differ with Commissioner, I respect that Commissioner, we just have to agree or disagree, and at the end of the day, if we have a 72 or 70% participation, the result will be the result, be it for, be it against, because of the turnout of the voters. That's why I made the motion.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, you know, Milton touched on it, you know, there's things where we agree and where we disagree, but we can agree to disagree. Only thing I would say is, you know, here we go again, just as Mr. Chapman said, you know, that it's going to be back to the people, you know, for this resolution, but I've got five good reasons at home that I'm voting against it for, my grandkids, but, you know, each person, each person makes choices, and, you know, I've been on the wrong side of it, but I'm on the right side of it, I feel like now, and, you know, but that's something that, you know, it needs to come to the voters, you know, for their choice and their decision because, you know, it's not going to go away, and, you know, the sad reality, there's a lot of other things we could do, spending a lot of time and money on, even though the cost is going to be down, there's a lot of people that are going to be, you know, working on both sides, and I respect each side and each person, but, you know, that's just my, you know, my opinion. Thank you for opting.
Mr. Chairman, I just want the folks to know that my vote tonight will be because of a statement I made three years ago, and I'm one of those people that if I tell you I'm going to do something, I'd do it, and I did that in 2013, and I made a statement after that, and I will uphold the statement that I made and stand by my word, and for that, I will be voting no, but I also feel like, and they didn't know what I said in 2013, I really and truly believe from the bottom of my heart that the, not only in Alexander County, but the American people have a right to vote to give their choice of how they feel about things. That's their choice and their freedom to do so, but I will uphold the word and the statement that I made and stand by it. I have to do that.
Okay, I respect that. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor, signal five, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries, three to two. Thank you. Item five on the agenda, Designation of Voting Delegate to NCA ACC Annual Conference. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you have a designation of voting delegate for the upcoming conference in Forsyth County, Commissioner Larry Yoder is the only Commissioner that'll be attending, and I guess it'd be appropriate to recommend him to be the voting delegate at this time.
Okay. Mr. Yoder, would you like to be the voting delegate?
I'm the only one going, I guess, I'm nominated.
Okay.
Does that need any motion?
Uh, yeah.
I make a motion that Larry Yoder represents Alexander County as voting delegate for the NCA ACC Annual Conference.
Second. Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There be none?
Mr. Chairman, if you all will, I think it's really important for the 2000, the next session of the legislature, it'll be in January, the association would like to make sure that if we have something that we'd want to come up, then, you know, you all need to let me know if there's a special legislation or something that you'd like to fight for so I can present it to the association. We do that, and so that's, that's one of the ways that we can get things done, and we need to make sure that that happens because they'll be presented to the Goals Committee, and then now that Goals Committee, they'll come up with, you know, five, six, eight, 10 things that they will really push forward for counties. So if y'all make sure you all get that to me, then I'll make sure that I present it.
And what's the date of that?
It's the...
11th through the 14th.
19th, I think.
The 19th.
11th through the 14th, August 16th.
11th through the 14th, I got somewhere, I'll be on 19th, so I've got that on my mind. So anyway, but we need to get that so I can present it.
Okay. All right, so if any Commissioners have anything they'd like for Mr. Yoder to discuss there, and get them, get that to him before the 11th. Okay? We had a motion, we had a second, didn't we?
Something went second.
Okay, all those in favor, signal five, raise your right hand, motion carries unanimously. Item number six on the agenda...
Item number six on the agenda, Lease Agreement Between the State of North Carolina and Alexander County. I call on Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this is not one of your favorite things, but nonetheless, several years ago, the state of North Carolina approved, I guess, passing along the, all the costs of operating, probation and parole to counties, at least the office staff and utilities and those things. So we have before you tonight the lease, and what they're asking for is to update the lease for three years. It's for a dollar. They want out a whole dollar on us per year, so we get three whole bucks out of this thing. The current lease will expire on August 31, 2016, and then they're asking us to renew this. If you'll notice, the very top, actually, the year it has is 2136, whenever, whatever year that is. But this is a standard lease, the same lease as we approved before. The county pays the lease, the heating, the cooling, the janitorial services, all the utilities except telephone, and we provide parking. We maintain the premises, the lease premises in good repair and so on. If we refuse to do this, they'll withhold the lease payments from our sales taxes, so, and it's a whole lot more difficult to go through. So anyway, you have the lease before you and I, I don't know if I can answer your questions, not about what, why the state did this or anything, but this is the lease that we'll need to approve tonight.
So they're willing to accept this huge increase?
Yeah.
So pretty much, we're on the hook.
We are on the hook.
Mr. French, could we ask them for a cost of living adjustment and ask for like a dollar 10?
They won't do it.
Maybe a dollar and a quarter.
Yeah.
They won't do it. There's been a lot of attempts to tackle this, both the Association has talked about this, and it's just, they haven't budged on this issue. This is from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. I know.
Y'all heard what I have to say about it, y'all heard me more than-
Folks, this is just an example of-
We're going to have it, so maybe what you're going to do.
How do I say this? Well, yeah, mandates from the state, but this is, you know, this is an example of where the citizens of Alexander County who pay property tax-
Pay for not.
You know, we, I mean, we don't even get to choose what to do with our own money in most, in many cases, and just want to make you aware of that.
Rick, how big a hole is this lease? I mean, obviously, the 2,200 square feet, I mean, the dollar, how much is the true cost to the taxpayer and lease expense?
I don't know the total expense, but I'm sure it's over 20,000 bucks a year.
It's about 22,000, I think.
19,000, 19,900. Nice.
I was looking at it, it says, on Highway 19, for one of our locations.
It's just ty, it's just typos.
Okay. I didn't know if we'd get more money by that.
No, no.
Wait, if they're typos, does that mean we can get out of it?
No.
Your motion?
Reluctantly so moved.
Second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, is there any discussion? Any more discussion?
I still think we ought to send them a bill. I've told y'all that and told you, I think we ought to send them a bill.
They might not send us the dollar then.
Yeah.
Or they might just pay it, because they may not realize-
It goes in accounts payable.
What it is.
That's right.
Give it a shot.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed.
Hey, I mean, you know, they didn't pay their rent. I mean, that's just the way it is, I mean, you know.
Larry Yoder voted against in protest.
Well, I knew I would.
Item number seven on the agenda is the Alexander County Sales Tax and Finance Report. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through July 2016, we've collected $3,767 in sales taxes. We budgeted $3,891,000 in sales taxes. We've collected 96.83% of, percent, and only 90, less than 92% of the year has expired. We still have more sales tax dollars coming in. As you know, sales tax run three months behind, so that's a good thing. We're currently running about 6.74% ahead of this time last, same time last year. And as just a note on the budget information that you have, revenues through the time period that you have are at 94%, and expenses are at 88%. So just, that's, that's a good thing.
Are there any large trailing bill items that we anticipate coming in that could move that number of the expenses up? Because I know-
There'll be, still be some, no, no big, no large ones.
Anyone have any questions?
We like to hear that spending is under budget. Sounds like we're saving, that's a good thing.
We'll move on to item number eight on the agenda, Other Business County Managers' Report. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention. One, we opened bids, or opened a bid at Rocky Face Park last week, and we had received a very high bid, so we've gone back and talked to McGill and asked them to review it. We'll bring back a recommendation at our August meeting, but we'll have to rebid the project. So not so good news there. We have had a number of suggestions and comments made about our animal control ordinance, and so our county attorney, Larissa Irkman, and Jennifer Sigmund, our Animal Services Director, and I've met a couple of times. And in your packet, you have suggested changes to the, or updates to the animal control ordinance. And actually, we passed out to you a copy of the current ordinance, which is 16 or 17 pages long, and if you look at page four of the ordinance, where it says cruelty to animals, under, it basically updates a number of those items under, under that section, where it says cruelty to animals, and there's a section on failure to provide adequate food, water, shelter, and veterinarian care, and there's a lot of, a lot of information in that section. There's a number of other things involving chaining and tethering animals, animals that are engaged in fighting, unsanitary and crowded conditions, failure to provide veterinary care, just a whole list of things, but it starts on page, would start on page four. We had to work this into our current ordinance, and also the last page where you see it ends on page, on, at section 2113, at, I'm sorry, 9113, all the changes that we have as listed, whether it's leaving an animal in a closed vehicle, we had something, added something about that, failure to, refusal to report an injured domestic animal, and numbers of things, keeping animals on vacant or abandoned property. Again, this is a more updated version, and we'd like to recommend that you approve these amendments tonight so we can get them out for the public to see and move forward, and I'd like to recommend that tonight, unless you have any questions.
How often do we revisit these type things? Because I think that this complaint prompt a revisit, I mean, do we have these on a regular schedule to-
We do not. We should, 2010 was the last time that we actually amended it. We made major changes then, but we haven't really-
Every two years have a review of it.
We need to do that.
And so that that way, you know, if there is anything we need to add or delete, we can have a schedule for that.
You should have seen it before 2010.
That is vague and ambiguous.
Yeah, yes.
Is this going to require additional personnel?
No, sir.
Is this just by report? Is that how we're going to be?
Yes, sir. Well, some will be by report, some others will, will actually, with our animal service personnel, will be able to witness things and deal with it.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess if it falls out, the person who's investigating it is pretty much black or white. If this is the case, this is the citation, it's not very subjective.
We're following state laws.
So if we implement this tonight, then what are we going to do? Give the residents, say, give them 30 days and serve notice that this will become effective on a certain date, on what we're going to do?
I'd make it effective the first of next month, August 1st.
August 1st will be soon enough, I think.
Okay.
What's the best method to get this out to residents, so they kind of know what the benchmarks are if you have pets, I mean?
We'll get it to some of the group, the people that are interested in it and distribute it, we use the newspaper or in other means, Facebook and other things.
I'm moved to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a motion, second, is there any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item, well, no item number, Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we accept Consent Agenda as provided.
Motion is, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We will be going into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 145 and 6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel. I make that in form of a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.